I call to order the special meeting of the Warren County School Board for Wednesday, February 13th, 2019. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Superintendent Overview of Paypoint Compensation Study, Mr. Fisher.
All right, well, we're gonna jump right in this evening. In front of you is a packet that has a whole lot of words on it. I'm gonna be pretty much going through this. And Mike, if you want to give some to the audience. So, four years ago, um... Sorry. Four years ago, we talked about doing a compensation classification study to help us with our salary scales and what we pay our employees. And it's taken a few years to get this done, but I want to thank the county for allowing us to partner with them as they did their compensation study as well. And it was presented last week at our regular board meeting, but there's a lot of detail that was not presented. And so tonight, what I'd like to do is kind of step through a number of things regarding the compensation study. And then what I'm hoping is, is that answers a lot of questions, but if it doesn't, then I can certainly meet with folks about anything that they have of interest of the compensation study. And I'd like to thank Mr. McCall for taping here this evening. We're gonna put this up on our website that it's available for people to see, and they'll be able to take a look at that as well. So, I have four goals, and I've listed those four goals as the first thing there. Describe why we're doing this, and I'm gonna spend a little time on that because I think that is critical to understanding why this is so important. Then, why we have two separate goals for our compensation study, one for teachers and one for all other staff. I want to offer some documents tonight that any staff member, any employee in Warren County can look at and see where they fall in the compensation study. So, everybody should get that answer tonight. And then I want to describe some short-term and some longer-term plans to implement these findings. So, I would like to start also by saying that we know this kind of study is a starting point. It's very helpful to our process, but in and of itself, it does not give us all the information we need to address every compensation issue. And you'll see that at the end when we go through some of these things. And all of this work that we're doing is about being competitive in our market. This is not just about paying people more. If we were already competitive, we wouldn't need to do this. So, our local market includes all the school districts that touch Warren County and the city of Winchester. In order to attract and retain a quality workforce, we need to be competitive, offer competitive pay and benefit activities. And I'm gonna give what, this is my, this is not the board's rendition of the history, this is my rendition of the history, so I just want to kind of clarify that. In the late 1980s and early 1900s, our pay was a bit more competitive, at least for teachers. I started in teaching in 1983 in Rapid Hana County. When I came here in 1987, I got pretty decent grades, just by switching counties, which is what's happening now to us. Our school facilities, however, and especially our high school, were pretty sorry shaped. We had a fairly new elementary school, LFK, at that time. Newly elected school board and board of supervisors shortly thereafter in the early 90s killed plans to construct a new high school. And I'm, that sent us into a decade of falling behind, not really, not just in our facilities, but also in our pay structures. The decree to not raise taxes, in my view, was overplayed. Our need for quality facilities went unfulfilled, and our pay structure slowly slipped further and further behind. We had a new elementary school in 1997, held a barber, and we also constructed a new junior high in 1999. Very helpful to the needs of our elementary students, but it did create a lapse in meeting the needs of our middle and high school students. It took us a while to correct. Early 2000s, we had new leadership came into play. There was, there were good leaders at that, at that time before that, but the bulk was really looking at not raising taxes at all. And that impacted us for a long time. And after the two, new leadership came into play, we had a 20-year capital improvement plan created. It's a well, it was a well-thought-out, student-focused plan that addressed the needs of our middle and high schools' population. The first phase, constructing a new high school and building, rebuilding the new junior high in order to have two high schools, began in 2005, and was completed and opened in 2007. During this time, compensation did see some increases, but not at the level to catch up with our region. We were already low in our region. I just make a point. We're very proud, and still are, of our state-of-the-art high schools and middle schools. They're awesome. Then we had the wonderful disastrous recession. The capital improvement plan did continue. It didn't get completed as quickly as we hoped, but it did get gotten. And while this was desperately needed, I would make the argument that it continued at the expense of our operating budget. We spent less on operating our schools for a long period of time. We were in the bottom 10 in the state. There's 132 school systems in Virginia who are in the bottom 10. Since opening the high schools, we've had another decade of not keeping up, creating what we have now. We offered the second lowest per pupil expenditure in our region. That's not a good thing. We're 118 out of 132 in the state. Per pupil expenditure is what shows us how much money we have to operate the school system. So, we've had two decades of not keeping up. As our economy's gotten stronger, other local school systems are making significant gains in compensation. When we do make headway compared to ourselves, we, in the last three years, we've done a great job of adding some increases. But our, the locales around us have added the same increases. And so, their 2% increase to their salary structure adds actually more dollars because their salaries have started higher. So, we continue to fall further behind compared to our neighbors. Here we're getting into the big deal. We are in the seventh consecutive year of needing to hire 60 or more instructional staff each year. This past year, we hit 72. If we lost 10% of our instructional staff each year, that would be a healthy turnover rate, and we'd be in about 40% range. This has skewed our staff ratios to being extremely inexperienced. 74% of our teachers at Skyline Middle School have five or less years of experience. 68 at Ewes and Morrison, 58 at LFK. No school has less than 43%. The percent of teachers with five years or less should be about 20% in a healthy distribution of staff. So, you can see how far off we are. We've made cuts into all of our operating budget areas in order to give any salary increases at all. And this has impacted maintenance, transportation, instructional supplies, technology, personnel, and really just every area in operating our schools. Keeping our personnel numbers low, we didn't hire people, means we have far fewer teachers than we need to man our programs, support our students, and create schools that offer excellent opportunities for students. At the end of the day, if we fail to meet the needs of some schools, we meet the needs of most. But if we fail to meet the needs of some students, or we fail to offer programs that make a difference in some students, or we fail to offer the depth of programs other divisions are able to offer, we will not be graduating as many high-level graduates. This has a negative impact on our community. My message to us here, to our staff, and to our community at large is, a high school graduate impacts the community they live in for the next 40, 40 years. A successful graduate has a positive impact. An unsuccessful graduate can have a negative impact. Excellent schools make a difference. We all need to understand that the tax dollars we put into our schools is a direct investment in our community, our region, our state, or even our nation. We cannot, we cannot continue to put in the money. The study is not just about paying people more money. It's about being competitive, strengthening our schools, and ensuring we're graduating as many highly successful people as possible. I don't mean to be overly dramatic, but like many here in this room right now, I have watched and been part of three decades of Warren County public schools. We've seen firsthand what happens when we invest and when we don't. And we need to help all of our citizens understand this investment. The community is healthier, more vibrant, and more economically robust with a strong public school system. That's why we're looking at this. It's not about just paying people more money. It's about taking what is one of the key things in a community and making it as strong as we can, and that's our schools. So, I've just met my first goal. Second goal is to explain the thought around, behind, behind having separate goals. When we met with Paypoint, the first recommendation they gave us was to meet the market for all employees at the 50th percentile. That means we'd be right in the middle, right in the mix. What we realized as soon as we saw the types of numbers that that generated is that this would not stem the flow of staff leaving, especially teachers. We asked Paypoint to create a plan that would stem that flow. In essence, we need to be highly competitive with Frederick County. They're, they're the ones taking most of our votes. Frederick County represents the bulk of our losses, and this is where many of our new hires already live. The plan being presented here puts our teachers alongside the highest in the region. That's a big deal. We also lose folks in other employee groups. Most are not to the same degree as the teacher group. We also do not have the same level of concern in attracting people in other employee groups. This is not to say that we don't need to be more competitive. We do. And our understanding was that if we stayed with the salary scales that just met that typical 50 percentile, it would not help us attract and retain those folks either. And this is why we asked to create a plan at the 60th percentile. I want to just clarify, that 60th percentile is for all other employee groups other than teachers. Teachers are higher than that, okay? In part, we also need to be aware that the total cost of implementing a plan like this, it's expensive. The higher the percentile, the higher the cost. And this was a condition considered in choosing the 60th percentile. Now, my second goal. Third goal, I want to show you the two documents, and those are, those are at the back of this little packet so you can kind of look at this at the same time. These are the ones we'll get the questions on, or let, let people digest them so we can respond to what their concerns are or questions about these. This first is a teacher scale. I'll hold it up so you can make sure you can see it. This is the one that looks like this. I want to thank Buck for, for working on this. I think what we're getting our heads around all of the details that are in this plan is, we're still doing it, be cut off, we're still trying to embrace all of them. But this shows a comparison of the current teacher scale and the proposed teacher scale. The market analysis showed us our biggest losses are in the five to 20-year experience range, and this scale addresses the issue. It's important to remember, this is about being competitive in our market. The loss of personnel is most profound in the five to 20-year range. So, what you're, what you're looking at here, the shaded area, is Phase One of our recommendation. Taking a look at teachers in the 11 to 25 years. So, you will notice numbers, and there's three columns I'm gonna draw your attention to. Column A, you'll see that at the top, that's current salary. Column B is the proposed, this is for discussion, I will say this, this is for discussion, proposed salary for next year. And column C is what that costs. In between columns A, B, and C, there's a lot of other data. Right beside column B, you can see the actual percent increase once you get to Paypoint's recommendations. So, those are the kind of things that need to happen to get us competitive. That's Phase One. The recommendation is gonna be taking a look at Phase Two, which is then going to, going to be looking at years zero through 10, which we're more competitive with right now. But we need to address those. And then Section Three, or Phase Three, is taking a look at years 26 through 30. This salary scale goes from zero to 30. After 30, there's not steps. And what you're seeing here, steps 31 through 36 or 46 are shown because we actually have people on those steps. So, we need to continue to show those people. We're not gonna move people back. They're still gonna be there. But what the recommendations are going to be is that they, they get, those along with everybody else continue to get COLA, Cost of Living Increases, as they go along. But we don't need, and this will be a little bit controversial maybe, but we don't need to increase those folks at the same level to be competitive. And that's, that's what this is about, we're trying to be competitive. I would say, if you look at step 30, and once at step 46, the difference between those steps will still continue to be as Cost of Living Increases continue. It's not, that, and those, I just did a quick little cipher there, you can check me on it, but that's about a 2% increase each year. So, if Cost of Living Increases still continue, teacher salaries still go up after 30 years. It's not like you're stuck there forever. I think that was, when the first data was pulled out, it kind of looked like we're all stuck there. We're not.
Twenty.
Yeah, 20, yeah. And we're changing that a little bit, yeah. So, that gives, that gives one piece of it. So, the second page that follows that is pretty much the other half of our employees. So, the, there are new salary scales for every employee group. And I would like to thank Melody. What she was able to do is take all of Paypoint's data and make it, make a little more sense to us. So, you will see on the left-hand side, we call them grades. We already have grades, but there, it's just different levels of employees, W-1 through W-21. You'll notice some numbers are skipped, and it's on purpose, we made the mistake. And those are, those are all of the grades that have people that are not considered administrators. And then, we thought this is for, just to show it clearly, that A-1 through A-8 is administrators. So, there wouldn't be any question about the differences. It wouldn't be as transparent as possible. So, this scale, there are several things going on at once here. 613 of our 787 full-time employees are recommended by Paypoint to have an increase to their current pay. Six hundred, it's, it's in my notes, but it's 613 out of 787. So, that means, I, I don't want to have 174 meetings with the people that aren't getting that increase, or that it's not recommended. But that means there's 174 people that are not being recommended for that. This will be upfront. The total cost to adjust for all of these employees, this is outside of teachers, is $726,000. So, if we could fix it in one fell swoop, that's what it'll cost. So, we know that we're gonna need, need several years to do that, if we will. So, it's some things to point out for our staff. The lowest scales have been raised to what Paypoint has described as a living wage, which is $12.18 an hour. You can see right on there what that is. That's our cafeteria level two folks. B, several employee groups have been renamed, some have moved to different scales, and some have done both. So, everybody should be able to find themselves on this scale. If you can't, please, call me right away. We'll fix it. You should be on it, or they should be on it. All the scales, and I spoke about this very, very briefly the other night, I think, the other, all the scales have been adjusted to meet the market goal of the 60th percentile. That's not individuals on the scales, it's the scale itself. And that's a little bit difficult to get your head around, but if, when you start looking at it, the, the, every scale on here is at the 60th percentile, 60th percentile for the market in our region. So, that's how that works. If an individual, so this is, so listen, so if an individual's current pay is below Step One of the new scale, it is suggested that they be placed at Step One. So, we have folks now, quite a few, that, like cafeteria level two, I'll pick on them, their, their pay is below Step One of $12.18. We have people in, on that scale that their pay is above that. They're already in that range. They're at 13, 14, 15, because they've been here a long time. So, if their pay is below that $12.18, the recommendation is to move them up to that $12.18, get them on the scale, okay? Here's the piece that, that will be hard to explain, but it's the way things are. If an individual's current pay is within that proposed scale, they're to be placed on the new scale at their current rate. So, if, on that cafeteria level three, if you're making $14.52 an hour, you're gonna be making $14.52 an hour on the new scale too. It's not proposed to do that as a first step. But I will say, and this is important because we are going to do this too, once we're able to transition to these new scales, it is gonna be up to us to determine, is it equitable pay within, within each employee group? And we have cases right now, we know it's not. It's not equitable within. There, you might be on the right scale, but you might not be on the right spot on that scale. And that is a lot of detail work. This may or may not happen at the same time we're transitioning to new scales. We're still trying to figure out all of those things. And, but I can tell you, all of us that are involved are committed to being, to be equitable as we work through these situations. We want to fix folks. We want to make sure that they're in the right spot on each scale, and that's an important thing. Those are the two big pieces of paper that, and these are gonna be, these are gonna be posted on our, our website as well. And they'll be posted on the boardroom, see, all right, boardroom as well. So, the last page is a little bit about where we're headed next to look at budget. We need to determine and apply the Cost of Living Increase to all employees. Because all this stuff with Paypoint and getting to the next, the next level with our pay scales, we need to continue the Cost of Living Increases at the same time. This can't be instead of Cost of Living Increases. This has to be in addition to it. Otherwise, we're not fixing anything. Or we need to act on salaries proposed from Paypoint that will give at least the same level of compensation that the COLA would give. So, you'll see some examples that we're trying to do there. Step Two, we need to, we need to decide, are we gonna complete what we started last year, the funding for half a step for about half of our employees? And then giving the, the step to the next set of employees that are eligible? Or are we going to act on salaries from Paypoint's recommendations that will give at least the same level of compensation as the step would give? So, this is a little bit complicated, but that's what we're figuring out right now. And then the third thing is, we need to show costs in acting all of Paypoint's recommendations, and then we need to show a three-year plan to enact Paypoint's recommendations while also acting on the COLA for the first in the next three years. So, that's kind of my overview, it took a while, I'm sorry about that, but, of what, of what the salary study did, and I can't, I don't know if anybody in the audience, I can't, just, the next thing is to have the, have, have public comment on it. The intention was if they maybe answer some of those questions, if you had them. If it didn't answer them, now's an opportunity to do that. So, turn it back over to the chair.
Public comment? Did anyone just like, comment?
You really actually answered the questions that people have asked me, and so, I shared this document.
This is public document, just to let, just to let folks know as well, tomorrow morning, I have a principal, I have a meeting with all principals, and I'll be going over the same stuff with them, so they'll be able to help support those questions as well. Everybody's got my email and phone number, and they're already calling me, they're already emailing me, which is great, but please keep that up. Our, maybe it's gonna talk up, public comment. So, the next thing is to take a look at the actual, the color of the cards. Or, I guess, do you guys have any questions or thoughts, or does anyone have an idea? Do you want me to cover something else, or did something jump out to you guys as I was rambling on here that I could cover right now?
Just a technical question. And I know nothing. Nothing lasts forever.
How?
I mean, is this just a snapshot of time? How valid are everything that's based on it? How long is that valid? Yeah, how, how current does it remain? How fresh is it?
It is, it's for now.
Or is it, you know?
It would need to be, if we wait two years.
Is it outdated? Three months, is it outdated?
The question I ask them is, how do we know when, because one of their recommendations is to not give increases to certain employee groups that are above market, and to wait until market, the market catches up. So, my, my question was similar to them, is how do we know when the market catches up? And they answered, that's a good question.
They're probably so, so, just to.
Pay for another study.
Yeah, pay for another study.
Yeah, pay for another study.
Or, or, honestly, we've done a pretty good job of knowing a lot of this information. Now, what, what we did not have, and what they did give us, and what I think is very valuable, is these pay scales are very solid when it comes to being similar as you go up the, up the, up the years or grades on the pay scale. And they're very solid for the, the levels of change between each scale. That is, they're tight. So, we have a really, if we adopt this, we have a really good system now, which we did not have before. So, that, that was very valuable. In terms of getting the actual numbers on, on staff, we kind of knew that, to be honest with you, we kind of knew that. So, I think to answer your question is, we'll continue to monitor, Buck calls every year, gets, gets pay levels for every employee group, we keep track of that. Part of the purpose of this is, is to validate a lot of the things that we've been saying. This is an outside group. They don't, there's no value to them to tell us that we need to do this. This is, and there were areas, just like I'm sharing tonight, where they said, you're fine. You don't need to get raises to these folks.
Did we, did we get the, to use the old question, did we get the apples-to-apples comparison that we were hoping to get, where, what it's called in, off your calendar? This is what it's called for Shandoah, and this is what the title is?
It's a mix. But honestly, I would say, I would, for teachers, definitely. Principals, definitely. System principals, definitely. Most director places, definitely. Cafeteria folks, definitely. We run into things like instructional resource teachers, maybe not as much. Administrative assistants, believe it or not, created some problems. Where they felt like they couldn't get some good, they gave us recommendations based on the data they had, but there are, I didn't count them up, but there are a number of employee groups that we know and we need to dive into or be able to make sure we have it right. Yeah, and that we're gonna do that. That's what we're doing now. Because one of the, one of the agreements we have with Paypoint is to get all of their raw data. So, we got it all, so we can, we can help do our, do our own analysis of it, but. All right, so, during the budget, budget, uh...
What's the total cost?
The total cost for Paypoint, they gave a number of $2.4 million.
$2.4?
Yeah. And some of that's gonna be reflected in these next sheets that we'll show you. That, no, that was for everybody that they, yeah, everybody that they suggested making increases to. So, what you're looking at here, and I think Rob, and Rob can speak for the code as I can, but I'll start us, and then you just kind of correct me, how about that? You have several different scenarios here. And the first page that you're looking at is just showing if we did nothing. So, if everything moved, everybody forward, it's currently on there on the scale, we didn't make any increases to any of our budgets, and we took whatever additional revenue we were getting from the state, we would have $2.17 million.
Not that we're recommending that. But just as sort of a starting, starting to see where we can start.
But just as sort of a starting point to see where to start.
Go ahead and talk about my page.
Well, I'll, I'll go down to the bottom of the page. Since we last met, and I shared with you at that work session, uh, the governor's proposed budget and what that would mean to us. The House and Senate have both passed a budget bill, and I think they're probably in their conference committees now. The impact of those two budget bills, the House would mean we'd get $43,840 less than what the governor proposed. And the Senate would, uh, have, give us $176,780 less than what the governor proposed. So, I guess if we're rooting for anything, we're rooting for the governor's budget at this point. Certainly not the Senate and, uh, preferably not the House budget. But, and typically, that's the way it comes out, and there's a compromise, and somewhere in the middle is where we end up. But, uh, we won't know until the, uh, the committees come out with a budget that both House, both bodies pass, and then, of course, the governor would need to sign. So, we're still probably a little ways off from that. The second page, and, and I think you, um, we, we mentioned, and, and all of the bills include a salary, um, incentive to give raises to our employees of 5%. Now, the thing is, in the fine print, what it says is, that 5% to qualify for that incentive, you would have to give over both years, or you could give over both years of the biennium. So, we gave 2% last year. So, to qualify for this money, um, we could give 3% and qualify for it. That would add up to the 5% that's required. So, we said, well, let's just see what that looks like if we take, um, the budget, and our state revenue would bump up by $890,000 if we did that because we received that incentive money. And then if we gave just a 3% across the board to everyone, again, that does not address any of the issues that were brought forward in, um, the pay study that, that we just talked about. But if we just gave a 3% across the board, kept all non-labor, level funded, um, we would almost have a balanced budget. We'd have $17,665 to work with for many other needs that, that we have. So, um, that's where we would be at if we did that. And we're going to work on some more scenarios between now and your next budget work session. Session, but this is what we were able to put together at this point. So, the next one is where we looked at not only giving a 3% across the board to employees, but also implementing phase one that Mr. Drescher spoke of a little earlier on the teacher's salary scale. And if we were to do that and not change anything else in the budget, non-labor wise, we would, uh, with the cost of benefits added in and all for the changes in salaries, we would need an, uh, increase in the county appropriation of just over $1 million to be able to do that next year. So, again, that would be giving all employees except teachers a 3% across-the-board increase, and teachers implementing that phase one, which was year 10 to '26, '25, something like that, to make those changes in, in becoming more competitive, um, in that range as phase one of, of the process. That would be the cost to do that. And then the last page is a compilation of requests from the different schools and also the different departments throughout the school division as far as needs. I don't know if you want to go down through each one individually, or if you want to just...
I think at this point, this is just to give you the, the list. We're not, I don't think, we're going to need to prioritize those, but that, I will say, there's, and Rob said this very well, almost every year, there's not a single thing that can list it on here that isn't needed. It is. And there have been some things in the past years we've been able to do, just not fragmented.
The second page lists things that aren't actual positions, but considerations, things, particularly non-labor items. We're, we're looking at that. There are some that will change. One item that jumps out probably to you is the utility shortfall. Our electric, um, bills this year are running significantly higher than last year, which is cause for alarm. And we're looking at why to see if it's actual usage or the unit price we're having to pay. I know there's been some articles in the papers about the utility rates and things that are going on with that. So, we're looking at that. We've put a number in there just to, to recognize that it's a need. The, uh, health insurance, of course, is another big thing. We pay over $5 million as an employer towards the employee's health insurance. And right now, I guess preliminarily, the, uh, they're looking at possibly a 6% increase on that. Buck, I think they said they'd have us, uh...
At the end of February. They, they sent out an email stating that around the end of February, they would have, you know, like, more solid numbers. So, that 6% could easily fluctuate one way or much higher.
Up or down? We put it in there just as a placeholder to remind us that certainly that is an important consideration and, and something we'll, we'll need to consider once we get that number later on this month. And that's sort of it as far as what's been presented and, and asked for and considered. Can I answer any questions you might have?
The list of positions?
Yes.
Has that been matched up with, um, the recommendations that, uh, PayPoint?
To the ex, not, not totally. To the extent that, and you, you're bringing up one of the, one of the points is, they made some recommendations on increasing some of our, some of our areas, especially teachers. So, it's 63, which is a huge number. But they also made some recommendations of reducing a couple. And we need to analyze that a little bit more simply because if we had 63 more teaching positions, there probably are some of those positions we don't need, um, to support. Because we'd have those teaching positions, when you think teacher, you have to think there's lots of different roles as teacher. Some of those are guidance counselors. Some of those are media specialists. Some of those are, um, English, non-Linguist learner specialists. Some of those are, you know, have different roles. And some of the positions that they're saying to reduce, support those things. So, I think that would, that would be a possibility. Anything on here that you can identify as a teacher would certainly line up, and most of them are that. Most of them are that. But I don't think, there's, there's maybe one or two, like, one of the things in the superintendent's office, I'll, I'll point myself out, information officer, lead master, something that we, every year that I think I've been in central office, we've talked about the idea of having somebody that supports all of the information that we're constantly having to put out or deal with. And then having somebody that can manage our websites. You, you think about it, every school has a website, school division website, and a lot of our special programs have websites. And we're just, we hope it gets done. Quite honestly, sometimes it doesn't. So, that is certainly not a recommendation from PayPoint, but I would argue that we need it. So, and there's a couple, I'm trying to look here if there's, um, I think like, Warren County Middle School, when, when they asked for a guidance secretary and testing administrator, there's profound need there for those things. It may not have been directly in, in PayPoint, but it's certainly one of the things we know we need to have. And I am not sure that study looked as in-depth as it could have at some of those types of questions. Yeah. Or we did PayPoint. I think, I think some of those things are add-on, you know, feeling. It's just like going in and looking at individuals on every pay scale. They can do that, but that's conditional.
Are there any comments or questions?
Were you comfortable with PayPoint?
Pretty comfortable.
What they were giving you?
Yes. I, I like, I like the, the pay scales especially, we're very comfortable. The next time we do this, I'm going to ask a couple more key questions about some of the details that I didn't, I didn't know upfront, I'll be honest. I didn't know upfront that they weren't going to look at individuals. I thought that was, I thought we were going to get, you know, everybody on the principal scale, maybe it'll tell, no, these are the three people you have to read, read adjust. We're not getting that. We're getting a principal scale, and it's us, up to us to come up with a, 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 a way. So, but overall though, yes, I'm, I'm glad we did it.
This is harder. Where's Buck? Can we compete? Let's, let's say we do half of this. I mean, I, I'd rather use it 100%. What about the school, the systems around us? Are they still going to crush us?
Well, we're going to lose people regardless of whatever because it just happens. It just gives us a whole better, it gives us a better chance. It gives us the better, actually, it gives us a better chance to have a higher retention rate. When people see progress and those type of things, I think you develop relationships. A lot of times, you know, some people leave and, some people leave because they're chasing this type of salary, and I understand that. But in general, most people sometimes may leave because, um, uh, or may stay, I should say, because of the relationships, because of just the community in general. Um, I think people enjoy being here. I think they enjoy, uh, working here. It just comes to a point after, on the teacher's scale, that once you get beyond that five years, you're not really competing with the people we're going to lose to in, in this area. So, to answer your question, will it, will it help us as far as retention and recruiting? You know, absolutely. Um, and then once we get here, we have to continue to create the environment, um, in addition to the finances that makes people want to stay here.
Role in the aid is one that bothers me as far as schools. The role of system aid, and this one got hurt in their opinion. And this one was rewarded and misinterpreted, which is not, it, it just happens. Unless you sit down with, almost sit down in groups and go through the process and explain why it's happened, it's a big job.
I mean, it's...
Keep you awake.
Well, but most of the time, for anyone, people eventually want to know, well, what's in it for me?
Yeah.
And that's...
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. That's what it really comes, that's what it comes down to.
And generally, increases in compensation are usually good for like six weeks, and then they go away. You forget it. I don't mean that in a negative way. It's just human nature.
I think a key thing is, we're looking at budget. I think a key thing is the making sure that we do the 3% of all of the true. Yeah, really do. I think it's, it, it, like every, I mean, but to me, that's just very first level. I mean, if that's all we do, that's all we do. But if we don't do that, I can tell you, everybody else is doing the same. Everybody is. Yeah. So, I mean, I, I really do think it's critical that we, that 3%, but I also think it's critical we use something related to this study that shows we're moving people forward on it. We've got it, we've got to do something. If we don't, if we don't, um, we're going to have another year of 70-plus people on it. I mean, we've had, our county right next door to us did an average increase of 10% last year.
Yeah.
And I just, their, their retention rate was incredible. I don't know if we've got anybody in position, but one or two. So, we, it works. You know, and that's what, that's where we're at. And then the bottom line is, and that's why I spent so much time on my first goal, is that this is, this is about helping our school system do excellent. And it is so difficult to be excellent when you have schools that 74% of the teachers have less than five years of experience. They just, it just, it, you're asking me impossible. So, we meet on Tuesday with the board supervisors. Um, at that time, we'll, we'll, we'll give them some similar information to this. It won't probably be as much in detail, but I'm going to give, I'm, I'm going to give them some similar, my notes, you know, just kind of give some background again. I think it's important because that's another time for public to hear. And I want to give them some of the basic numbers of what Rob put together of if we do, um, just 3%, this is what it costs. If we implement phase one in teachers, this is what it costs. And if we implement the recommendations for all other employee groups, this is what it costs. And we're getting to the point where if we don't do some of these budget requests for personnel, that's causing issues. We have, we have people that are, um, in extremely stressful situations managing things that, you know, three people manage, and they're the only one doing it. And, um, we see it every day. So, we need, we need to address those situations. And that was, it, to me, that was another reaffirming point of this, of this study. 63 teaching positions is, we're doing all this work with that much less than what other people have. So, now why don't we get some stressed people? They're, they're good folks, doing good work, and we need, we need to give them some help. We need to give them some help.
Any further discussion? Questions? I'll next.
Paul, as I said last time, we saw today, where Chief Mayby has a five-year plan. I'm sure Sheriff Keaton is going to have a plan. It's just what I hope for supervisors to understand is that, you know, we're not at, we know we're not asking in a vacuum, and we're not the only ones asking, and that they've got bills to pay, they've got buildings to pay off for us. We understand that, but, you know, we, we have to start somewhere. We ask the question, what, what would it take for you to say yes? And, you know, we, we got PayPoint, they have funded PayPoint to tell us what we need. We just have to start somewhere.
We need to start now.
I know, I, I know it doesn't grow on trees. So, we know it's, it's a possibility of asking for a tax increase or something like that, but, you know, it's, it's at a point where this county, this county's road needs to move forward. The only way to do that is, is with attacking somebody's salary. Retire, retire than anyone that...
Our ability to pay?
Right. Our composite debt.
Most of it comes from personal property tax, and, and again, we got a lot of land in this county, and we can't gain any revenue, you know, so, properties and things like that. But, you know, there are things that we need and things, and when I say we, I'm using the global we, that our county needs, particularly where our students live. We'll, we'll work alongside them. We're not, we're not going to be pushing them or, we're not going to be pulling. We'll, we'll work alongside them to get this better.
And since a third party that has laid it out there for us, you know, so, so I just don't stop it off. Any further business?
No?
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.